Here's the gavel once in a while. Going to call this meeting to order. This is the annual town meeting of the Town of Lunenburg, May 4th, 2019. May the Fourth be with you. I declare that the warrant was properly served and is returned to the office of the Town Clerk. I declare that we do have a quorum, which in the Town of Lunenburg is 50 people. Would you please stand and address the flag as we pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to thank all the volunteers that serve our town, whether they're elected or appointed, people that give of their time and their talents to help us run this town. At this point in time, I'd like to address and ask Damon McQuaid for a few comments.
Before we get started today, I want to take a moment to recognize selectmen Jamie Toll for his all of years of service. Jamie has chosen not to run for reelection this year, sadly. He's served as selectman from 2013 to 2019. He serves on the Building Reuse Committee from 2013 to 2016, the Capital Planning Committee from 2013 and 2016, the Cable Advisory Committee, the Town Manager Screening Committee, the Charter Review Committee, the MMPO Representative for the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee Appointing Committee. He's also worked to coordinate the annual Memorial Day observances, and he's, you can always see him around town, he'll be the emcee for anyone who asks him to, and he's absolutely been dedicated to running the volunteer booth at every single festival and fair that we have, and has probably been the first point of contact for many people who volunteer for the town now. His service is greatly appreciated, and we'll miss him.
Of course, we need more volunteers. There are a number of committees that need volunteers. I know that the Finance Committee has at least one opening coming up, and maybe even two. I want to encourage you to fill out a Talent Bank form. I don't know if they're still this color, but they were when I had one. They're also on the town website, they're available at town meetings, so I want to ask you to consider seriously about volunteering. It's a great way to know everybody in town and everything that's going on. Not that that's always a good thing, but, and of course, I need to appoint volunteers, and one of the volunteers that I will be appointing this morning with your approval is my deputy moderator. Having a chance this year to review the charter, which I hadn't looked at for quite a few years, realized that I had shirked my responsibilities. I'm supposed to nominate somebody for your approval each and every year in case something should happen to me in the course of the next year. So I will be appointing Rob Bowen, who is very active in many of the things that go on in town, and is an attorney who I think understands the rules that we follow. He's at almost every town meeting. So all those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously, Rob. I have a few announcements this morning. I want you to know that the Second Annual Lunenburg Arts Festival is Saturday, June 8th, on the Memorial Drive, from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. I want you to know that there is a Memorial Day celebration, remembrance and honor, on May 27th at 10 o'clock at the Veterans Memorial Park, which, if you don't know, is across the street from the Eagle House Senior Center. I want you to know, this is from the president of the Lunenburg Memorial Fund. Some of you may not know of the fund. It has been a little less active over the last few years, and regrettably, the Lunenburg Memorial Fund will be announcing the closing of this 73-year-old organization. Started in 1946, they donated hundreds of gifts to all departments in town. The Board of Directors would like to thank the people that donated money in memory of loved ones over the many years that helped serve our community, but they will be ending that club. I want you to know that there is food from the Lunenburg Women's Club, there's doughnuts and coffee, there will be bagged lunch sandwiches. We will not be taking a break. We'll be going straight through. We're going to finish. The Kentucky Derby is at 2 o'clock. Might not make that, but I will be watching the sports that are on. I think it's hockey tonight at 8 o'clock. This is an open public meeting, so that if there is a board that has deferred their vote, they will discuss and vote on that at the microphones by a roll call unless it is a unanimous vote. If you have to exit the meeting to go get some of those sandwiches and doughnuts, which you can bring back in, but you better be careful because John Laund is going to be mad at me if we make a mess. Go off the main doors, come back in the main door so that we know that you have checked in and you're registered to vote. Please know also that the Lunenburg Friendly Seniors are having a raffle. Please know that there's a couple of young women from the school that are selling some shirts, and all those things are available to you if you need to take a break from all this stimulating conversation. Going over the ground rules, please remove your hats when we're indoors and in the presence of the American flag. Please turn off all your noise makers. Those are your cell phones, your beepers, and the like. That includes any verbal noise makers that are inappropriate for civil debate. By that I mean hooing, hissing, hollering, booing, et cetera and so on. You get the idea. All comments and questions are to be addressed to me, and I will seek an answer for you as necessary from the various boards, committees, and moving parties. You don't and shouldn't refer to specific individuals by name. Instead, refer to the previous speaker, the moving party, the member of the Select Board, the member of the Finance Committee, et cetera. Your comments must be at the microphones. There's one in each aisle. There's one up front in the corner to my right. Those should all be there. At the bottom of each microphone, there are some forms. If you want to make an amendment to any article, if it's more than just a word here, a word there, we would ask that you write it out. It's carbon copied, so we will have a copy up here for the Town Clerk. The moving party will be allowed to speak first. They'll be given adequate time to present their article. Thereafter, speakers should try to be brief. Keep your comments to just a couple of minutes. Anyone other than the moving party that wants to speak a second time, I'm going to ask that you limit those responses a second time even more. And if there are people behind you who haven't spoken, and you've already spoken, then step back and give them the time to speak. Amendments on the articles that I said that are more than simple changes must be in writing, and they must be within the scope of the article. So if an article was published to the people by the warrant that was mailed, and they therefore know what is on the warrant, and have decided to come to this meeting to vote, you can't then start changing dramatically or even significantly what was before them and advertised to them because they weren't warned to come to the meeting and do that. So I will have to make rulings at times, but I would consider things to be outside the scope. Every article will first be put to a vote. I'll declare if it passed or it was defeated. If there are seven people that think that I got it wrong, which has happened, Kathy, then you will stand and say, "I doubt it." If you just stand, I think you're leaving. So you have to yell out, "I doubt it," and then we'll know that there are seven people, and then we'll vote by cards. Wherever my pink card was, here it is. You all got one. In case I forget, Kathy wants you to return them for recycling, even though it looks like it's a little trash bucket out there. When you leave, she wants you to put it in there. She's on a tight budget. Moving the question is a way that people can sort of end the debate if they feel like we have beaten something to death. It must be by a two-thirds majority. It must be seconded, then we vote. It's not debatable whether or not we move the question, which means basically to cut off debate. I will call that out of order if I think there's a lot of people that still need to discuss and debate and comment or question on it. But other than that, that's how you can move the question and get things done. Reconsideration of a vote that we've just taken may be done by either the moving party or the losing party. I'm not going to allow you to do it if a lot of people leave, and then you try to reconsider a question after a majority of the people or many people have left. But if it's done right away, that can be done. Guests should be seated on my right, over where the Chief of Police is sitting, even though he's a wonderful guest, but he's not a guest as far as being a registered voter in the Town of Lunenburg. This town conducts its business by town meeting time, kind of like Robert's Rules of Order, but it's specifically written for town meetings. If you want to, you can borrow a copy, you can borrow mine, you can borrow one from up in Town Hall. Used to be one at the library. I think somebody borrowed it and didn't return it, so it's not there anymore, but hopefully we're going to get it replaced. They're writing a new one, so we'll probably buy it once we have a new one. We welcome people to participate in this meeting. We want, we're not trying to make it difficult for you on procedure, so you don't have to read town meeting time. If you've got a question about how you want things done, be in touch with me, be in touch with the Town Manager, and we'll guide you through the process. We want people to write their own articles if they want to move things on at town meeting. We have five citizen petitions this year. We had four last year, but what we would implore you, get started early. Help, let us help you draft the language that you want on your citizen petition before you get the signatures. Therefore, it can be done in a way that fits legally with what we're going to vote on. I assume that there's consent of the body, that we will post on the board most of the, all of the articles, but if something is long and wordy, particularly the zoning things, that we'll have it there without people reading every dot and parentheses. So at this point in time, I believe we are ready to begin the meeting, and I will call on Mr. Toll. I will call on Mr. Toll, Article Number One.
I move that the town vote to pass over Article One, having already accepted the regular written reports of the town officers and committees.
All those in favor of passing over Article One, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Article One is passed over. Article Two. Mr. McQuaid?
I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town to establish and authorize resolving funds for use by certain town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, by deleting the table in Section 135-8D and substituting with the table as printed on the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval.
Finance?
Finance has no recommendation. There's no financial impact.
What's going on here, Mr. McQuaid?
The Town Manager has a brief presentation.
Okay. Ms. Lemieux, what's going on here?
All right. Welcome, everyone. So this bylaw was created at the last annual town meeting due to a new state requirement that towns were required to create a revolving fund bylaw. And this article replaces the current bylaw's table by including the column for restrictions or condition on expenses payable from each revolving fund in the applicable tax fiscal year.
Replacing the table. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of Article Two, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Article Three. Ms. Luck?
I move that the town vote to reauthorize the revolving funds for certain town departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers for the spending limits as printed in the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. This is Article Three in your town warrant. I'm going to read, this is the way we'll do several of these things, including the budget and including Article 36 that deals with the charter. I will read the various different line items. If you have a question or a comment or want to make amendments, just yell out from your seat, "Hold," and then we'll go back and discuss this. But for this particular article, ambulance billing, $100,000. Timber rights, $10,000. School custodian special details, $13,000. Green thumb, $5,000. Library revolving fund, $12,000. Council on Aging, MART revolving, $45,000. Stormwater Task Force, $5,000. Electrical gas plumbing inspector, $46,000. Technology, $30,000. Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll declare we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article Three, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that we have our representative, Representative Hay. Raise your hand, Representative. Always comes to all the meetings, and we appreciate your being here. Article Four.
Okay. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $500 from free cash for payment of prior year expenses.
How much?
$500.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
We voted to recommend approval.
Approval. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about Article Four? We declare we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Article Five. Ms. Luck?
I move that the town vote to transfer from Line 13 Reserve Fund the sum of $75,000. Transfer from Line 75 Veterans Benefits, the sum of $5,286. And to transfer to Line 66 Vehicle Maintenance Fire Department, the sum of $15,631. And transfer to Line 70 Snow Removal, the sum of $64,655. To amend the amounts voted under Article Seven of the May 5th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, and Article One of the November 13th, 2018 Special Town Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Tell us about this. Ms. Luck?
Town Manager is going to answer questions.
Okay. So everyone can refer to their green handout where it says Article Five, Fiscal '19 Budget Adjustments. So this article is to adjust certain line items within the current year's budget, which is fiscal year 2019. The recommendation is to transfer $5,286 from the Veterans Benefit Line Item, and $75,000 from the Reserve Fund to cover the snow and ice deficit in the amount of $64,655. And a shortage in the Fire Department Vehicle Maintenance Line Item in the amount of $15,631. The 10-year average for snow removal has been approximately $360,000, and the fiscal '19 appropriation was $275,720. And the transfer of $64,655 makes it a total of $340,375. The Fire Department Vehicle Maintenance Line Item was over budget mainly due to a $14,000 repair to Engine Four and a leaking fuel tank on another fire truck.
Any questions, comments on Article Five? Please seeing no one at the microphone, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article Five, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Article Six, Capital Plan. Mr. McQuaid?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $923,235.87. Transfer from free cash, the sum of $582,731.96. Transfer from Article Seven of the 5617 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $27,329.68. To transfer from Article 14 of the 5413 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $2,712. Transfer from Article 14 of the 5314 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $1,780. Transfer from Article Six of the 5518 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $139,938.7. Transfer from Article 14 of the 5716 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $21.93. And transfer from the Premium Reserve for Capital Fund, the sum of $6,350.49 for a total appropriation of $1,684,100 to fund the FY '20 Capital Plan as appearing in the Capital Planner Report as printed in the warrant booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Board of Selectmen will recommend after the presentation.
After presentation? Okay. And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Tell us about the article.
Town Manager will make a brief-
Town Manager, I'm guessing. There you go.
Yeah. Also refer to Page Five in your warrant booklet.
Okay. So the slide before you is the slide where the capital projects in your warrant booklet, if you look to that. So the Capital Planning Committee received a total of 17 requests totaling $2,853,100 for fiscal '20. The fiscal '20 Capital Plan recommendation has a total of 14 capital projects for a total of $1,684,100, funded with a cash outlay and does not include any borrowing. The Capital Plan includes two general government capital projects. One for five voting tablets that replace 20-year-old voting equipment for the Town Clerk for a total of $26,500. The other funds $50,000 for the planning board to use to hire a consultant to work on sections of the town's master plan and implement recommendations in the master plan. For police capital projects includes a replacement of two police cruisers that correspond to the regular replacement schedule, and the anticipated replacement is with hybrid cruisers. These total $116,000. It also includes the replacement of patrol rifles and shotguns due to their life expectancy of 10 years for a total of $16,000. For Fire Department capital request includes a replacement of the 1995 Pumper, Engine Four. This unit has served beyond its expected lifespan. This is the third year it has been requested for a replacement. It has received approximately $65,000 in repairs in the last four to five years, most recently with the Pumper replacement. This totals $685,000. Plan also includes replacement of the 2008 Amelant Rescue Two. The vehicle is at the end of its life cycle. This is the second year it's been requested for a replacement, and it's been experiencing increased maintenance costs and out of service for repairs. There are stress cracks noted in the annual state ambulance inspection. This replacement cost is $310,000. There are replacement for two vital sign monitors as well. The current vital sign monitors in each ambulance are 10 years old and are obsolete and no longer able to be calibrated or repaired, but currently work properly. This was flagged during the recent ambulance inspection as this is mandated to maintain our level of licensure. This capital request is for $15,000. For school capital projects, it includes the next phase of the Turkey Hill asbestos abatement project. This is a continuation of a phased asbestos abatement at Turkey Hill. It includes removing spray-on fireproofing in Room 102, one stairwell, and the second floor hallway. This capital request is for $162,000. It also includes Wi-Fi upgrade at the primary school and Turkey Hill Elementary School. This is the last year to take advantage of a state grant that will provide 50% of the cost for Wi-Fi infrastructure. This request is for $19,600. The plan also includes $16,000 to install a building automation system at the public safety building that will create greater energy savings, $12,000 for painting the exterior of the teen center, $36,000 for the resurfacing of the basketball court and fencing around the court at Wallace Park, $220,000 in funding for the removal and replacement of fuel tanks at the DPW. This last project was originally funded, $110,000 in fiscal 2018, and the estimate at that time was based on doing the project in-house. New estimates for using fully engineered plans and outsourcing the project requires an additional $220,000. The town received notification last week from State Representative Benson that she was able to secure $165,000 earmark in the state budget. This still needs to go through the state's budget approval process, but is very promising news. If the town does receive the $165,000, any unexpended town funds can be re-appropriated towards future capital projects. The recommendation before you includes raising and appropriating $923,235.87 using $582,731.96 of certified free cash, transferring unexpended balances from previous capital articles in the amount of $171,781.68, and transferring $6,350.49 from the Premium Reserve for Capital Fund.
Questions about the Capital Plan, Article Six? Mr. Moderator? You have to come down to the microphone unless it is a procedural question, Mr. Chatfield. That's why you shouldn't sit so far back.
I don't know. Can anybody here, please? Should I go over there?
You've got to come to the microphone. Everybody comes down. In the meantime, we're going to ask Ms. Lizio if she has something. Go ahead.
Rhonda Lizio, 181-
All right. I don't know if that microphone is on. Somebody jump a check it. Either that or you're a little vertically challenged, Ms. Lizio. There we go. Bring it right down.
Rhonda Lizio, 181 Reservoir Road. You said there were 17 requests in total. What were the three that were not added to the plan?
Thanks, that Town Manager. They were for improvements and repairs to the town facilities that were identified in the Vertex reports.
Okay. That was going to be my next question, actually, because, you know, we voted before to do this study, and I was just curious why none of the recommendations in that report that the taxpayers paid for were included. So I guess that answers that, although I don't know the rationale. I did try looking up the capital planning minutes, and I, and the meetings aren't recorded, so I just didn't know what the thought process was there.
Well, let's stop, let's stop and see if we can get the answer. Why were some of those, did somebody on the Board of Selectmen or the Town Manager want to tell her why some of those articles, some of those requests?
I'll attempt to answer.
Thank you, Mr. McQuaid.
Some of the smaller items in the Vertex report are being handled through the general budget that don't quite qualify for capital projects. The larger items, we have some other articles further down our agenda here that will add some clarity to the direction we're going to take. It's not prudent until we have an understanding which buildings we're going to use how to spend the money that was, you know, pointed out during the Vertex reports.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I would just say in response to that, that I'm not for selling buildings. I'm for fixing buildings, and I feel like we have a, pretty much, a roadmap for how to begin to address our buildings and to go another year without doing so. I just feel it's very short-sighted. And I have one more question on the Capital Plan, and that is the voting machine items. Will that work for ranked choice voting as well? Because that might be something that's coming down the road.
Who knows about the voting machines on the Board of Selectmen or the Town Manager?
I would ask the Town Clerk to answer that question. Did you hear it?
Repeat the question.
The question is, the upgrades for the voting machines, are those, is the equipment we will be getting compatible with ranked choice voting in case that comes up?
Well, let's ask the person who runs the election.
In a few years.
The question is, you're going to get new machines or doing something here in the Capital Plan about machines. Will they be capable of doing ranked voting if that comes in the future? At the microphone, Ms. Herrick?
No. No, they won't be.
At the microphone, please. That's okay.
It's my understanding that there are no voting machines available in Massachusetts to do ranked choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Your name and address.
Mike Chapter Lane, 208 Lemonsdale Road. I have a question about the fire truck and the ambulance. Can I assume that the vehicles that are going to be replaced are going to be either traded or disposed of?
The answer is yes. However, we can't expect too much revenue from trading them in because they are so old and don't have value to other communities. But yeah, we will not be retaining them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. It's a procedural question. Are we just asking questions now, or could we propose amendments?
You can propose amendments at any time while we're debating the articles. Absolutely.
I'd like to focus in on the $220,000 for the fuel tanks at the DPW. I had the opportunity to watch a couple of presentations on this over the course of the spring. The background on this is probably better presented by the department heads, but in summary, this is an additional $220,000 on top of what I believe was $100,000 that was appropriated. appropriated for removal and replacement in years prior. We need to remove the existing fuel tanks at the DPW due to environmental and other reasons, but we have the option of not replacing those fuel tanks. The purpose for replacing them would come down to basically two things, is my understanding. Number one is availability of fuel in the event of an emergency, which would serve our collective benefit, I believe, and also convenience for the departments themselves and the folks that work in the departments. There are alternatives. Amongst those alternatives are cards that the state provides. Basically, they work like gas cards that would allow us to acquire fuel on an as-needed basis at a discount. And there was a cost analysis that was done, a limited cost analysis on the base of about a month's spending that was done by the DPW and the public safety departments that came to the conclusion that the crossover point where we would recoup the cost of replacing these fuel tanks over time, based on the cost associated of buying in bulk and not taking the discount that comes with the credit cards, would be about forty years. And that crossover point includes just the replacement cost, not the removal cost. I've also learned over the course of the last couple of months that the estimates associated with these replacements are all over the map. We have no idea, is my understanding, what this is going to cost. It could be $100,000 less. It could be $150,000 more. I don't believe anybody can definitively say what the costs are associated with this project. Now, a continual theme over the course of this meeting will be the operating budget, the omnibus budget, and the money that we are not spending in the omnibus budget is to some extent affected by the capital plan. This year's capital plan is 15.7% more than last year's capital plan, and last year's capital plan was 121% more than the previous year's capital plan. But we're not spending on capital, or we are spending on capital, we're not spending on operating and services. And in my opinion, one department that is underfunded this year that we should be looking at very closely is the school department. So I would like to propose an amendment, given what we've just learned about the $165,000 and given the fact that the numbers are all over the map on this project, that we reduce the fuel tanks line by $100,000 and move that to $120,000, let it go to bid, let Mrs. Benson and Mr. Hay do their magic, and if we need to come back and revisit this in the fall, we do so.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Okay. So that's an amendment. Can you write that down, Mr. Beardmore?
I can if you'd like me to, but it's literally $100,000 change, so.
Well, I thought you were talking about other things with...
No, I'm just talking about that line.
Remove that line, fuel tanks at DPW from 220 down to 120.
Yes, sir.
Period.
Period.
And that's been seconded. So we can continue to discuss the benefits of the capital plan, particularly that line item. I didn't hear any other discussion about other line items, and then we'll get back and we'll vote on that in a minute, okay? And we'll vote on that, we'll get a vote on that before we vote on the entire article. Let me just see if the gentleman behind you...
We're gonna open to other, we're gonna...
Well, I just wanna see if...
Just for clarification, are we gonna discuss other potential amendments first?
I wanna see what the tenor of the body is, if that's the only thing we want to discuss in the capital plan.
Yes, sir.
That's all, just so I can find out. Sir?
Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road. I don't have a comment on the amendment, but I...
Okay, so let's just wait and see if anybody wants to talk on the amendment first. Sir?
Carl Luck, 50th Sunset Lane. Mostly just to fill in, because there's a lot of numbers flying around on this thing. This prior speaker was correct, but I wanna add context to that. The only quote, detailed quote that has been made available to the public on this replacement has a range for the replacement of $382,000 to $486,000. So that's the only professional quote we have to do this job, removal and replacement, versus the 330 that is, that we're being told it's gonna cost. There are lower numbers flying around, but there's nothing in writing, and so the only thing we have to go with is that the professional quotes exceed the quote we have now by 50 to $150,000. So I want to confirm that that isn't just an opinion. That's a firm, not a firm, a quote from a professional engineering firm that the town uses a lot, so has a lot of credibility with the town.
Thank you.
Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. I'm wondering, I'm hearing, you know, all kinds of numbers, and I'm assuming that the department heads had a rationale for requesting the $220,000 in the capital plan, and I'd like to hear from the department heads as to why the appropriation that they feel is correct is $330,000. One thing I do wanna stress is, one of the issues with the fuel tanks is, I understand that there are gas cards available, but if you think back to the ice storm, for example, when we were without power, many of the surrounding gas stations were without power. My understanding is that by replacing the fuel tanks at the DPW, we then have an emergency generator which would allow our public safety officials to operate in the event of an emergency with power, with fuel, which, as we all know, living where we do, that unfortunately in some situations, when we have a bad storm, we may be without power for a significant amount of time. I certainly don't want us to be in a situation where our public safety officials cannot respond because they can't fuel their equipment.
Thank you. Someone gonna address the questions that the young lady posed?
I would ask the DPW director and the police answered questions related to the cost of the project, and the police department has a presentation as well on further explanation on the wax cards.
I think she specifically asked, correct me if I'm wrong, if we need some tank for Understand the appropriation, and she's asking about reserve. Somebody, DPW chief? Looks like you anticipated this would come up. Go ahead. Be in the smart aleck.
You gotta turn it on.
My name is Jack Rodick, I'm the Public Works Director in town. Let me just start by giving a little primer on the capital process. We were asked as department heads to give an estimate around August, September for a purchase that is, will likely be made not before August, September of the next year since the funds become available in July. That in and of itself makes any project difficult to pin down in terms of the numbers. Even something like a truck or a cruiser, which may have a sticker price or the price that's available to the town in August of one year, may not be anywhere near the price that we'll need for the second year. So what do we do? Do we add randomly $15,000? How do we justify that? Do we put this price knowing it's likely we'll go over? And those are just for small purchases. So that in and of itself is difficult to do. I wanna address this $110,000 estimate that I put forth. I think I worked on that estimate, actually, at this point in 2016. My indoctrination into this town as a department head is to get the best possible value at the, I won't say the cheapest price, at the lowest price possible. So when I took on this project, or when this project was for me to fulfill, I looked at it in this respect. If I position myself as the general contractor, the inspector, and use in-house personnel such as people in the conservation, our conservation agent to mark the wetlands, for instance, instead of having the contractor do that, use our town manager as the procurement officer, writing up all the paperwork and the contracts that need to be done, putting it out to bid, which may not seem like much, but it's a process and it's very time-consuming. Additionally, I expected to use DPW personnel and staff wherever possible because it would eliminate prevailing wage, which adds 30% onto any labor. I'll say 30 to 35%. The price keeps going up. The union scale goes up every so many months, so in a year's time, what would that projection be? But it'd be a tremendous amount of savings. Additionally, as the general contractor, I could buy the components of the tank, the electrical components, whatever is needed, at, note, the elimination of tax, since we're tax-exempt, and certainly at a better price without the markup that the contractor would legitimately use, he's in business to make money. And that would be, you know, I'm not gonna guess, that'd be a considerable savings. Any materials that might be needed, concrete, stone, gravel, the town could supply at a much more reasonable cost, and the asphalt component of it, I mean, we would have our contractor, PJ Keating, do that at a, again, at a substantial saving. So when I put all this together, I was confident in that number. That's how we got to the 110. As it says in the capital article, the decision was made to bring an engineering company in and have them do many of those things that I've just suggested, including the procurement. And when you do that, the cost goes up substantially, but there is a liability that's covered with that, and the choice was made. So we went from the 216 estimate at 110 to an additional 220 to make 330. But one of the previous speakers has mentioned, in what might have been his only documentation of that, there were two other slides that went with that. One that represented a smaller tank size and one which also represented a negotiation between myself and the engineering company as to what we actually needed, what we could do in-house, back and forth, back and forth. And frankly, in order to maintain my integrity and the integrity of the town, it's not an effort towards a lack of transparency. These people would probably bid the job. These people are likely to bid the job. So if I make public ACE Engineering Company or ACE Installing Company and let everyone know that this is what their bid is going to be for the sake of trying to pin this down, then there's a question of ethics involved. And if I do that the second time, I'm reaching, so ABC Tank Installers, which I have done, which I have in this folder, that's 304,000 with a significant contingency, which we may or may not use, that's brought it down even more. I have a third estimate, just the engineering component, which against the engineering component that was previously mentioned, that cuts the engineering costs almost in You know, at this point in the process, it's really difficult for me to extend that information over to everyone in the public. I mean, the first estimate, when it was thrown out, was in an email, and you know emails are open to public scrutiny, which identified the company that did it. Now, what kind of integrity you think we have as a town or I have as a person when I negotiate with these people and say, listen, this is for negotiation purposes, this is to bring to the town a legitimate number? I can't identify these people. It's a sealed bid process. Now, I know many of you are aware of what that is, but let me explain that more. Sealed bid means just that. We hand out a scope of work, there's a little more to that paperwork than that, and then we have a date when anyone and everyone can submit a bid based on the scope of work. The idea that it's a sealed bid means that nobody else knows what anybody else is gonna bid. Again, if ACE knows, if somebody knows that ACE is gonna bid, well, look, they talked to Jack, they're giving the town, it's $340,000 or whatever we're gonna bid here. Well, Christ, we'll go 330 or 320 or something lower. They've already said what they're gonna bid. It skews the whole process. So we don't know exactly what the number's gonna be until the day you open that bid. So to try and pin me down time after time after time after time is, what is it gonna be? What is it gonna be? What is it? You know what? I don't know exactly what it's gonna be. The building that we stand in, this beautiful building, as I understand, came in at $2 million under the cost. I know for a fact the public safety building came in significantly lower than the estimated cost. Even our lowly DPW project came in under the cost. I've had trucks I put on the capital bid that came over the cost. So rhetorically, what are you looking for here? This is our best estimate. This will take care of us. I have confidence that this will take care of us. And with the good work of our representatives, this $165,000, it makes the point mute. Even if for some reason, which I doubt, it goes over the 330, just deduct 165 from that and see where you are. You're well under. That's the numbers part, and I'm gonna leave some of this to Chief Marino, but to reiterate what one of the previous speakers said, what sort of number do you wanna put on this public safety component? What number would any of you like to put on there? One of the previous speakers last year made an emotional plea for more fire, and you granted more fire, right? Who in their right mind would not want a stronger public safety component in the town? But the people in public safety and Department of Public Works works on the what-if theory. What if? What if that additional firefighter that's coming to your house because you're dying of a heart attack can't get there? What if that happened in 2008 in the ice storm when nobody could move? Do you think I wanna bounce my front-end loader down to Cumberland Farms and wait in line to get diesel fuel to load the trucks that have the salt to clear the road for the ambulance to get there? It's the what-if. We have to be prepared for everything. Listen, I understand the wax cards. I understand the convenience, perhaps, of getting a card, going to any gas station all over certain, you know, these good folks will give you the cost analysis. Again, I ask you, you give me the cost analysis on your life. You give me the cost analysis on your public safety. Oh, this is gonna be 1,000 more, oh, this is gonna be 1,000 less. When you're making that 911 call, you want those people there, do you not? You want that tank fueled, do you not? In the worst conditions, in 2008, we were fueling our own vehicles, our own public safety cruisers, our fire trucks, state police, National Guard, and everybody else that was working towards making this community safe, and that took three weeks.
If Rodick is, I think we get it. Thank you.
Well, I promised my daughter I'd stay within myself.
All right.
Sorry, Tim.
Not a problem. Nothing wrong with being passionate.
First of all, Tim, is it on?
I don't know. Keep talking.
It's on. Speaker.
All right. Who are you?
Jim Marino, police chief, behind 16 Chase Road. Yeah, I just wanna point out that you haven't recognized Representative Benson in the audience here yet.
I didn't see her. Oh, she sat so far away. Representative Benson also joining us, living in town. Thank you for being here.
I'm gonna defer this to the public safety coordinator, Amanda Moore. She's worked on this...
point out the differences between what we do in terms of buying contract fuel and the WEX program.
Thank you.
And after that, I'll make a few comments.
Excellent.
Okay, can you hear me? Amanda Moore, 110 Mopus Road, and I'm also the Public Safety Coordinator at the police station.
Get nice and close to him.
Closer.
Your mother can speak up, you speak up.
Okay, Amanda Moore, 110 Mopus Road. I'm also the Public Safety Coordinator at the police station. When this project came back on the Capitol plan, I was asked to start to do a cost analysis between keeping our fuel in-house and looking at an alternative state contract, which is the WEX cards. That is what the previous speakers have alluded to, the state contract. Just on here, this is just a slide of a few other communities in Massachusetts that have replaced their in-ground tanks with above-ground tanks. This is just a representative sample of what they could look like. There are some other flat-top type tanks, but this is just an example here. This has already been touched upon, the $165,000 earmark in the state budget. The two state contracts, the one that we currently use is ENE 4041, that is purchasing bulk fuel, and we compared it with VEH 100, which is the fuel card services. On both contracts, we would be responsible for the same taxes. There are some taxes that we're not exempted from, even as a municipality. These are listed here. They're billed a little bit differently on the two different contracts, but we are responsible for the same taxes on both contracts. I worked with the administrative assistant over at the DPW, and we compared Lunenburg, which is the bulk pricing, and Fitchburg, which only uses fuel cards. We, as one of the previous speakers said, it was a limited analysis because it is going through everyday transactions from Fitchburg. We looked at a 30-day period in January of 2019, and on average, Fitchburg spent about 36 cents more per gallon on gasoline and 25 cents more per gallon on diesel than we would have had we purchased on that same day on our bulk state contract. These next two slides, we compared the townwide usage for gasoline as well as diesel in fiscal 2018. We applied, if you look at the slides here, this has broken down the total gas gallons for each department. The town as a whole used just shy of 30,000 gallons in fiscal 2018. We applied the additional cost, and we estimated that it would be approximately $10,738 more per year had we used the fuel cards. Did the same thing for diesel, and it was an additional $3,338. I met with several people in town here, and we tried to get as close as what we could to what the actual cost and cost savings could be. There is an additional rebate available through the WEX card program if you pay within 45 days. So we applied that amount to the total cost that we would have spent. That's represented there. There is an annual maintenance fee of the pumps, these are estimates, but there is an annual maintenance fee associated with the pumps as well as insurance. So taking all those things into consideration, we assumed that you would save around $7,000 per year by not going to the fuel cards.
So, this whole thing, this whole exercise, let me just say this first. I guess I wasn't keeping my eye on the ball very well, and I have a lot of excuses for that, but I'm not going to make them. This came to my attention not that long ago, and it's so important to Public Safety to have this asset, to have this resource, that I felt really compelled to get involved in this. And I already knew, I heard this WEX program, I already knew about the WEX program. I go to the chiefs meeting, I go to Central Mass, I go to Mass Chiefs, I hear about these programs, and they're basically used because of the convenience of them and nothing else. So, to that end, I felt that, you know, somehow we should get involved in trying to show that the cost, the cost of the WEX program really doesn't save the town any money. And that's how we arrived where we are today. But during this process anyways, obviously, I wanted to be as impartial and objective about the whole situation. I tried to get some citizens involved. I told Amanda when she did this study to make sure that it was as impartial as possible. I don't want to be accused of stacking numbers. All this is real. I didn't really even get involved in it. She did it all, pretty much all by herself, as far as crunching the numbers goes. But at any rate, during the process, Callock in particular brought up a few points that were really well taken. You know, what am I going to do if, for some reason, we lose our tanks during an emergency? Maybe we don't have electricity to pump our gas, or something to that effect. So it made me look at other ways to obtain fuels, fuel sources. A couple of good ideas, I mean, one of them was that local contractors maintain diesel fuel in tanker trucks. And so I did make a phone call to a local contractor, and it is true that most, that a couple of them here in town keep like 6,000 gallons, or four to 6,000 gallons on the premises, that they would be willing to let us access in the event of a weather incident or major catastrophe or something like that. That is strictly diesel fuel, not gasoline. There's no such thing as a tanker truck sitting around with gasoline in it, because obviously that would be very dangerous. So, the other thing I did was I contacted a local developer who's building a new gas station down in the Whalem area, and asked him if he would be willing to allow us to put a generator hookup so that during an emergency, we could go to the gas station, get the electricity going, get the pumps going, and so on and so forth. He wasn't, he was willing to listen to me, but kind of gave me a lot of, well, he basically showed me all the downsides to that. I guess there's some rule or law or something whereby the gas station has to be attended by an employee before that can happen. So for us to come in and commandeer a gas station, I think would be more complicated than what everybody would think. And he made that pretty clear. I've talked to other police chiefs who've been in the same situation, and one in particular told me that he tried to do the same thing, and during an emergency, it turned out that the girl that ran the gas station couldn't make it to the gas station, and the owner lived some 50 miles away. So access to fuel wasn't realistic at that point, and it caused him a lot of anxiety. These are the things that I don't want to deal with. I've spent a lot of time, I guess, working on emergency action plans and other things, and really never gave this a lot of thought, which, you know, that's on me. But coordinating with private sector providers and local construction companies to facilitate the delivery of adequate amounts of emergency fuel, I don't think is as realistic as we think it is, but may serve to be something we can look at in the event that we lose our source of fuel. Don't forget, you know, during situations like Hurricane Harvey, it knocked out 30% of the nation's refining capacity, and it has a direct effect on us as well. So, you know, we have to look at, we have to, you know, be mindful of those situations. But anyways, our first line of defense has always been these fuel tanks. I think it's a huge asset to the town. I can't imagine why we'd want to get rid of any asset that the town owns, particularly in a case like this. This is something that, you know, we've maintained for decades and should, and it should remain, and we should remain, we should continue to do that. I can't understand why we'd want to eliminate it. And, you know, any action taken today that adversely affects the ability for Public Safety to access and control fuel supplies necessary to support immediate response to operations for critical incidents and weather events or catastrophes will degrade and likely disrupt any ability to ensure that essential public services needs can be sustained and to guarantee the normalization of community living conditions. Just something that the DPW director had alluded to. The ice storm is a perfect example of that. Anyways, I hope you reconsider. And I want, you know, one thing I want to do emphasize, something that the DPW director said, this whole system, this process that we have, where we ask for capital money, and in this situation and in many other situations, we cannot even go out to bid until it's appropriate. It's kind of like putting the coffee for the horse. But that's the way it works. That's the way we do business and always have. So in this case, it's no different. We don't know what it's going to cost. The sealed bid process doesn't allow us to know what it's going to cost, and doesn't allow us to share any of that with the public. It's not a great process, but that's what we're stuck with. We always, we always have faith that the bids are going to come in low, and they typically do. The Public Safety Building, as the DPW director said, is one example of that. That came in way under bid. So we gave the money back, and that's what will happen in this case. We're hoping that it'll cost a lot less, and we're going to give the money back. We can't keep the money. So please, I hope you take, I hope at least you give this some careful consideration, if nothing else.
Thank you, chief. Okay, I'll get to you. I'll get to everybody. Sir.
Tom Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue. I believe, first of all, and I appreciate the impassioned remarks of both the police chief and the DPW director, I've spoken to both of them about this, and I want to be clear from the outset that as one person, I completely support the onsite tanks. So, and I don't think, if I heard the amendment correctly, that the mover of the amendment anticipated or was talking about removing or not doing the online tanks. I think they were talking about reducing the number that we would appropriate, which I think is an amendment worth true consideration. I think that the Capitol plan puts a lot of strain on the budget, in my regard, unnecessarily, because if I heard correctly, the whole entire Capitol plan, including a $685,000 vehicle that has a lifespan, I'm assuming of 15 or so years, there's no borrowing at all. So they're putting, there's a $900,000 strain on the incoming revenue, and then 500-plus thousand on free cash. And I think there's a good argument to be made that a reduction in this amount, especially if the cost is unknown, is certainly worthy of discussion. But I want to be clear, I am for the onsite tanks for every reason that the DPW director and the fire chief gave, for all of the reasons that are on the board right there. So I think that the reduction is interesting. I'd like to know what the impact would be if we reduced the number by the amended amount from 220 to 120,000 dollars. How would that affect the project? Because if we're not going to know that money until a special town meeting, we certainly have the ability to appropriate the money then. I mean, the 110,000 that was voted last year, from my understanding, hasn't been spent either. So obviously, if we were able to wait this long, can we wait six months and find out what the actual number is? I'd like to know what the response is to that. And if somebody could explain why we, on these articles, especially the fire truck, why we didn't do any borrowing over a life, an item that has a lifetime of, you know, 15-plus years, when we certainly, that's the reason why that kind of borrowing exists.
Well, let's get back to that second question after we get through the amendment. So if somebody can address the issue of what happens if it's reduced to 120? I think that was his question.
Bottom line is, we might not be able to do the project at that point, because the funding from the state is unknown at this time. That operates on the premise that it is an approved earmark in the state budget, which won't be known until July, so then we may not have sufficient funds.
Okay, I'll get back to you because you're the moving party. I will. And you already spoke, so let somebody behind you.
I tried.
He just, well, I know you're a gentleman. Step forward and tell us who you are.
Thank you. Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I'm here to speak in support of this article, the way it is. And I will tell you that I was the one that started with the WEX system plea for investigation. And one of the main reasons that I did was that, and it hasn't been mentioned yet, I don't believe, one of the main reasons that I did was I didn't see any sense in taking the tanks out where they are and putting them back where they are because of the close proximity to Mopus Brooks. The plan that the folks that are heading up this project have told me is that the plan is to move the tank installation away from that, which takes care of my concern for the environment. So, all things considered, well, I should also tell you that it's my considered opinion, okay? I'm not an engineer, but I've done some of these. It's my considered opinion that we can save a lot of money, the way that they have proposed, okay? And for that reason, and the reason with the environmental, I support this article and the way it's presented without the $100,000 reduction. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I'll get to you, chief. Ms. Birchfield, and then Mr. McQuade, and then I, don't worry, I'll be back. Well, just spring that as Terry.
Basically, the only thing I wanted to bring up was, at the fireance committee, one of the, knowing that there was some question about how accurate the projections were, our sense was that if the number was going to be insufficient, we would find out during the RFP. If the numbers were insufficient, then we just would be able to go ahead and do the RFP. So we were comfortable with the number, knowing that it was, and just being more involved in the money. So if it wasn't that we were ignoring that, that the number was not, you know, we would basically, that's our assumption, the RFP will go out, if the money's not there to fund it, then we have to change the budget. That was our, I just want to share that with my team.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McQuade, project.
Just as Chairman of the Capitol Plan today, speaking in defense of the increase. Speaking in defense of the increase in the Capitol budget in years of late.
You put the whole budget up, Ms. Lamier, so we can see it again.
Capital plan?
Thank you.
Several years ago, we asked the department heads to start projecting their needs out 10 years, and it became woefully obvious that the Capitol requests were nearly triple the former Capitol budget of each year. So the requests were three times what the budget was going to be consistently for the next 10 years. We were never going to catch up on that. And I need to give credit to our department heads for the thoughtfulness they put into their requests each and every year. They do not throw things on there frivolously as a wish list. These are things that they need, for vehicles and to maintain our buildings, and things that we use every day as a town. So I just need to say, I think it's one of our greatest accomplishments in the past two years to actually fund the Capitol plan, so we don't fall behind and have deteriorating buildings and equipment that doesn't work for our departments, and it's one of the greatest things we've accomplished, to me.
Thank you. Let Mr. Beardmore address some of the stuff since he made the amendment. Go ahead. Just give us your name every time since we're recording.
Yes, sir. Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. I have just a point of information request and then a comment through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town manager. Could you please explain the procurement?
needs out ten years. And it became woefully obvious that the capital requests were nearly triple the former capital budget of each year. So we, the requests were three times what the budget was going to be consistently for the next ten years. We were never going to catch up on that. Um, and I, and I need to give credit to our department heads for the thoughtfulness they put into their requests each and every year. They do not throw things on there frivolously as a wish list. They, these are things that they need for vehicles and to maintain our buildings and things that we use every day as a town. So I just need to say, I think it's one of our greatest accomplishments in the past two years to actually fund the capital plan. So we don't fall behind and have deteriorating buildings and equipment that doesn't work for our departments. And it's, it's one of the greatest things we've accomplished, to me.
Thank you. Let Mr. Beardmore address some of the stuff since he made the amendment. Go ahead.
I have a.
Just give us your name every time since we're recording.
Yes, sir. Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. I, I have a, just a point of information request and then a comment, uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town manager. Could you please explain the procurement process whereby if we were to appropriate, I believe the number would be in this case, we would have a total of $230,000 for this project if we were to approve my amendment? And the bids came some number over that number and we did not receive the state funding. Could we then come back to town meeting in the fall and appropriate additional money to be able to accept those bids?
Ms. Lemieux?
So it would be an insufficient amount appropriation if the bids came in over that number. So we could not award the bid. And most contractors, and it's usual, bids are only good for a certain number of days. It's usually thirty to sixty days. So we would not have sufficient time.
So to be clear, we would not have sufficient enough time, but we would have information in the way of what the bids were and we could rebid it following the fall town meeting if necess, if necessary.
We could rebid it.
Okay. Just, just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
As a, as a point of, just, just a comment here. I, I don't disagree with the need and the point of my amendment was not to say we shouldn't replace these tanks. It was very clear that I thought we should reduce the number in an effort to be a little bit conservative when we are looking at a substantial increase in capital spending, albeit well, well defended, I think, um, over the course of the last three years to the detriment of our operating budget, which in some areas are underfunded. I think that this is a responsible approach. We are not, we don't have a gun to our head here. We don't have to replace these tanks inside of the next two, three, six months. If we overspend this at this town meeting to the tune of $165,000, if that's what comes in from the state, we will not be able to spend that money for a year and a half. Free cash has to be certified. It then has to get re-appropriated at next year's probably fall town meeting. That's, that's where we're at with that $100,000. That's a teacher in the Lunenburg School Department in the next school year. A primary teacher, probably. So I want us to think really carefully about, and, and I, I appreciate all the comments and I don't disagree with really any of the comments that came from, from the town leadership on this. I think that this is an opportunity to take one conservative step here and, and do something that is financially prudent. We can still get what we're looking for and perhaps put another teacher in a classroom next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Patrick Sullivan, 197 Reservoir Road, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director for the town. Uh, I'll be brief. I'll echo the comments of my fellow department heads on this project. Uh, it is needed. Don't forget, it's already been put off from when it was originally planned for a couple of years. These tanks are all probably in the range of thirty-plus years old. At some point, they are going to fail and we're going to need to replace them in a hurry. I think we need to move on this for all the reasons that my fellow department heads have, have met and spoke on. Uh, in our research that wasn't mentioned, we researched all the communities around here as to what they're doing. With the exception of Fitchburg and Ashburnham, they all rely on municipal fuel sources for their support. And again, echoing all the same reasons that we echoed, emergency response, emergency preparedness. Ashburnham has a large commercial fuel depot, not a gas station, but a large commercial fuel location. They get their fuel from that and they have an arrangement. Every other town has municipal tanks, has gone through exactly what we have done and set it up. Again, I would recommend disapproval of the amendment and continuing on. We need to get these tanks replaced and we need to have a replacement in place for them when that happens. These tanks may not give us a choice. They could give out at any time, given their age. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms.?
Hi, Sarah Cammer, Lancaster Ave. Uh, I do not agree with necessarily reducing our budget for tank upgrades, but I do understand the motivation for trying to allocate some things that are in the capital budget to operational budgets. I don't think, uh, oh, I already said that. I already said that the tanks aren't the way to go. But there are things that aren't our capital plan that do not need to be done immediately where if we do get $165,000, they could be prioritized as next, such as voting machines, $26,500. The master plan, $50,000. Painting the teen center, $12,000. Parks, $36,000, et cetera. I just, our schools are an incredible asset in town and we are building things for our capital plan, which also are important. They need to be balanced. I don't feel that they are. And so I understand trying to find if we are getting an earmark of $165,000 potentially, moving things around so that we can operate at a higher level across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman behind you, Mr. Luck. Hasn't spoken yet. Go right up.
Hello, Paul Thomas, Six Mace Field Road.
Your name and address.
Um, I just wanted to.
Your name and address. I didn't hear.
What?
Name and address.
Paul Thomas, Six Mace Field Road.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, um, kind of agree with what a lot of people have said. I fully understand the need to have the tanks, um, available, but I also agree that I think it's likely that the quoted numbers will come in, um, at what the director estimated and that the state money will come in. And so if either of those things happen, then the full 220 would not be needed. And so I, I would just like to support the reducing it for now, um, and revisit it in the fall if, uh, the state money doesn't come in or the quotes come in higher than expected.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go with ladies first. Mr. Luck, you don't mind? Ms. Birchfield?
Paula Bertram, 312 Townsend Harbor Road. People are talking about the procurement process like it's just an easy thing. Let me be very clear, it's not. There's a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of resources that are spent on a procurement bid. To talk about, we can just do it in the fall. First of all, it is not guaranteed we have a fall town meeting. A, a fall town meeting is done if necessary. So it's not a given that we will in fact have a fall town meeting. Our public, we are very fortunate at Lunenburg to have a phenomenal team of dedicated individuals and public safety people that, that take care of our community. And we're talking about potentially a situation in which a life could be affected because people can't get the fuel that they need to do the jobs that they need to do. We've heard from our public safety officials that in the event that the bids come in lower than anticipated, lower than $330,000, then that money will be reallocated. We need to trust in our public safety officials. They have done the homework. They are putting forth their best opinion of the money that they need in order to do this project. This project will take things from an environmental perspective. It will put us in a better, in a, in a better environmental situation and it will put us in a better position for public safety. We are, our DPW director, our police chief, our fire chief, and all of the people that work so hard are coming forward to us and saying, this is what we need. I understand that if the bid comes in lower, then we can reallocate that resource. But understand that going through a bid that is good for a certain amount of time is going to take time away from officials doing other tasks because it's not a simple thing. Believe me, I was on the Board of Design for a long time. I know what's involved and the amount of work that goes in. So it's not, if we don't allocate enough money, we're wasting our time going through a bid process that means nothing. So I would urge you to vote down this amendment and put your trust in our public safety officials.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Luck, just a, um, sort of a point of order to begin with. Are we going to?
Never say your name again.
Oh, Carl Luck. Uh, Carl Luck, I'm sorry. Got it. Uh, 50 Sunset Lane. Um, are we going to go through and vote on this amendment first and then address anything else?
We're going to vote on the amendment first, then we're going to have discussions for the capital plan.
For the rest of it.
The article, right? And then we're going to vote on the article or other amendments.
Right, okay. Great, thank you. Um, on this one, I, um.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. I think we, I think we need to be creative. I understand it's a lot of work. I've been involved in a lot of procurements. Um, but if you think, if you think in advance and you know what the, what might happen, you can, you can prepare a, a bid package that would address that. Uh, you know, the timing on this, for instance, you can request a quote that has extended validity, even as an option. You could have a ninety-day validity option on a quote, whatever option you need, would need to get passed a special town meeting for that, for that same quote. So you wouldn't have to go re-quote. You just have to go get the money at the next town meeting. So I don't think, if you get creative, I don't think that's a, a barrier at all to, to taking the approach that's been, uh, been, been given. Uh, I can't remember the last time. We haven't had a special town meeting and, um, I'm pretty sure I'd put money on it that we could. Anyway, and, and if this was an issue, clearly it's a very important issue safety-wise, it would be a reason for a special town meeting if there were no others. And I bet you there'd be a lot of people jumping on that special town meeting. So I don't think either one of those things should be a barrier against voting against this proposal. And I, and I am very concerned and, and I couldn't agree more with the, I don't know how many speakers before, I'll just call him the, the guy in the red shirt. Uh, I'm very concerned that we're shifting a million dollars of our, of our raise and appropriate money to capital. Um, this is, this is not a good, uh, not a good trend. Not that we don't need the capital, but that's not the way to do it. So, thank you.
We might still be meeting day to day through the fall.
Steve Archambeau, 662 Page Street. I move the question.
There's the second. Get ready. I think he's going to be the moving question guy all day long. That's not debatable, requires two-thirds to cut off debate. All those in favor of moving the question, cutting off debate. We're moving the amendment, by the way. All those in favor of cutting off debate, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Great, it's moved. Okay, so on the amendment to reduce that line that says fuel tanks to 120,000 versus 220,000. That would be a majority. Amendments are always majority. All those in favor of the amendment to reduce it, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I'm going to declare the amendment has failed. I don't see seven people, so it has failed. Now we're back to the entire capital plan. Now we'll get to the recommendations. We will, I hope. Go ahead. On the capital plan.
Tom Alonso, 284 Lancaster Avenue. I'll revisit my question from before. Why, when the $685,000 for the fire truck is forty percent of the whole budget and is certainly an item that would be perfectly suited for long-term borrowing over ten or fifteen years, why did the capital plan and, and the rest of the budget process choose, if this was paid over twen, you know, fifteen, ten years, let's just say it was paid over ten years, it would have relieved the budget pressure by like $600,000? And that is, that kind of long-term borrowing is exactly the kind of item that this is really suited for. We wouldn't have even had the previous debate if it wasn't for this. I'd like to know why that wasn't considered and why we're taking all, you know, $923,000 out of raise and appropriate when later on in this meeting, there's going to be a lot of people standing on a lot of microphones, talking about pressures and other part of the budget that I think really could have been avoided.
Inquiring minds want to know. Ms. Birchfield's going to tell you her finance committee thoughts.
Uh, well, you, again, these are just our thoughts. Um, but one, given where our debt, where we are with the debt policy, we're trying to address that and bring that down. Two, the part of the capital plan that is not visible is all of the, the funding that was identified that would be required through addressing the, um, infrastructure related to the Vertex studies. So we were anticipating that the potential for needing borrowing for any of those things was not, um, something that was necessarily off in the distant future. I don't think that we would have had a problem with short-term borrowing. I don't think that we would have gone out ten years, um, again, because our, we're so close on our, we consider the debt limit or the debt ceiling, um, is too high at this point. We're looking at when it comes down so that in three years, we expect to see more operating funds available. Um, so in the short term, we were just concerned with that. And the other thing that we had, that we won't necessarily have going forward, was a very, um, good year for free cash, I guess. Basically, the, we don't anticipate growth continuing to trend the way it is, given the developments are pretty much all set. Um, and we were, again, looking at down the road, uh, expecting that if there's any decisions made about any of the, uh, buildings that have been part of the reuse committee's attention for the last ten years, um, or actually six, seven years, um, that, that those funds would need to be sought.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road. Um, like a previous speaker, I'm concerned we took out items for, uh, building maintenance of, of some of our, uh, buildings in town and, um, was wondering how much was allotted to that for, um, we have, we have Article 21, 22, and 23 where we're looking possibly to convey the old primary and Brooks House. Um, then Article 24 where we're looking to do another, uh, what is this? A feasibility study for repurposing TCP. I was on the original, uh, high school feasibility study for renovating or building new and, and that started around 2004 and we didn't build a high school till, what, start around 2014? So I'm, I'm concerned by not having, uh, money to maintain what we have while we go off on a potential ten-year plan to rebid, to reuse TCP. That the Brooks House, of course, the, it, to me, it looks like it's in pretty good condition, but it's looking like it needs a roof. Are we going to wait till it has its leaks and it becomes a tear down? Um, so I'm, I'm concerned. We took those items out. Uh, things are hinging on other articles. I, um, I'd almost say to force this, we, we table the capital plan to a special town meeting and, uh, until we get through Article 21, 22, and 24 and see where those reside, how can we approve a capital plan if we don't, uh, vote to convey these existing properties? Uh, if we don't vote to convey them, it means we need to maintain them at some level and we have no money in the capital plan to do that. So to me, it's an intentional, uh, ignore it till the buildings deteriorate so you have to tear them down. Um, so I'd almost like to say, how, how can we move to, to discuss and vote on Article 21, 22, 23, and 24 prior to coming back to the capital plan, um, to see if we need to put that money back into the capital plan?
Are you asking if we could pass over the article?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to pass over the article. There's the second. Okay. So we'll get to that in a minute, okay? We'll vote on it. Mr. McQuade, Mr. Capital Plan, gentleman has an idea. Question about why it's on this part of the law.
So the items on the Vertex report, which I, some of them are very important. A lot of them, the way the report was written, was the things you need to do to continue the use of the building as it's being used now. Until we know how those buildings are going to be used exactly, meaning what use is going to occupy them, a lot of those items, punch list items, are, are a waste of money. They probably would not help the person who's going to reuse the building, reuse it the way that they want to use it. And to say that we're going to have a clear vision of what we're going to do with all these buildings by fall is absolutely impossible in my eyes. It means it's taken us years now to come up with something and we still aren't there yet and there's no way we're going to have it in another six months. So to hold up the things, purchases for public safety and vehicles and things like that over some clarity on the buildings just doesn't make sense.
Hold on. Ms. Lys.
Rhonda Lysio, 181 Reservoir Road. Um, I just wanted to make a general comment, um, about the capital plan and kind of address what a previous speaker said. Um, I've attended a lot of finance committee meetings and at one of them, pretty recently, there was a report done which showed that our debt rating is very weak. And I prefer to pay for what we can pay for, you know, whether it's capital. Um, and I actually even would go so far as to say I would cut. And I actually even would go so far as to say, I would cut operational in order to fund capital. I just feel like, I personally don't like debt. I try to eliminate it from my own life, and I certainly don't like to live that way as a town, so that would just be my preference. And so I agree with spending more on the capital items. And I support the finance committee looking at those ratings, even though our credit rating is good. I'm concerned about that weak rating. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to make an announcement, we had 148 people checked in when we started, a few more have come in after that. Good attendance at the town meeting. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so I agree with the previous speaker, too. We should maintain the facilities we have and put money in in response to the selectmen. I'm not concerned about replacing sinks inside the building, or furniture, or I'm concerned about the exterior, and keeping these buildings in a condition, in a condition that they don't deteriorate.
Okay, but it's going to be on the amendment. So.
Dave Blatt, Goodrich Street. I just, I apologize that I wasn't able to get here at nine, I have other things, but was there an explanation of what the $50,000 for another master plan is for? Haven't we done a master plan, like every four years, we seem to vote for another master plan? Have we done anything with the last six, seven that we've used at all? And all we seem to do is go around in circles. We've talked to people, we've heard people talk about how it takes 10 years in the building, we've been talking about Passios for, whew, how many years, folks? It's ridiculous. Another 50K. I know 50K's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but it's 50K, guys. What are we doing with this? What is the purpose of this thing, again?
Somebody tell the gentleman about the master plans.
Well, this.
Mr. McQuaid, go ahead.
This master planning is for, master planning that the planning board takes care of, that needs to be renewed every 10 years, and Adam can fill in if I'm missing anything here, but the reason we keep doing master planning is because we're required to keep doing master planning to make sure we stay current. This isn't master planning to do with the buildings, this is the planning elements that are specified by the state, as far as like open space, and just the master plan is the direction the town wants to go in.
So you're telling me that the state is mandating that we spend $50,000?
Go ahead.
$100,000, I'm sorry, is my eyes bad here? $50,000?
The request was for $100,000 to completely update our master planning elements.
Holy cow.
We, we.
Is this state mandated?
We talked them down, we said, you're probably not going to get that all done in one year, can we split it up? So this is to.
So the state is mandating, I just wanted to clarify here, the state is mandating we spend that much money on another master plan, of another master plan, of another master plan?
Again, I'd ask the land use director to fill in if I'm missing anything, but this is reoccurring, this is, the planning board's going to go through the process, and this is to hire a consultant to aid them to do it.
Can I chime in?
Let's not get bogged down. Go ahead.
When the land use director position was created, part of his job is to create, is to work on the master plan. So the land, it is the land use director's job to do this. The state doesn't tell you, you have to spend money, you can, and it's $50,000 this year and $50,000 next year, so it's $100,000 projected. And I agree, we haven't done anything with the master plans we already have. We had an economic development plan developed, we haven't even looked at it.
Let's vote on whether we're going to pass it over, and then we don't have to debate every line item forever and a day, okay?
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
I said we're going to vote on whether or not we're going to pass over the entire article, and then we can get into the specifics of the article. Go ahead.
One point of clarification, too, to the selectmen, that spoke at town meeting in the fall, or special town meeting. We can hold a special town meeting at any time, correct?
Yeah. Selectmen can call a special town meeting, we can have one Monday night if this one doesn't finish.
Right.
Okay? Quarter of 11. All right, so we're going to vote on the motion to pass over, just, I couldn't see you. Go ahead.
In terms of 21 through 24 having an impact on this.
Say it again.
In terms of Articles 21 through 24 having an impact on this, because none of those items were included, and in regards to the motion.
Yeah.
Instead of passing it over for this meeting, can we just revisit the article after those ones?
We could, but that wasn't the motion that was seconded, but you were right, we could have. But the motion is to pass over it, and then you could make a motion after we do or don't pass over.
So I would undo my second to completely pass over it, because my preference would be to relocate it.
Relocate it, right, okay. I'm going to, we're going to take a vote on whether or not we're going to pass over it, and then Ms. Adams may or may not make a motion. All those in favor of passing over the capital plan article, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, so we're not going to pass over. Good. Well, I guess good. Ms. Adams, you have the floor.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to clarify that, and I would be only second, so technically we join my second with previous ability to vote on the motion.
I heard that they didn't, but it's okay, we didn't pass over. All right, the capital plan is before you. Ms.
Rebecca Lantry, 251 West Street, and my, I don't know if I've already been passed over.
No, we didn't pass over.
Well, you passed over what I was concerned about, and if there is no capital plan money for the maintenance of primary school, old primary school, Brooks House, or the TC Passios, this has a great deal of impact, because you are now being considered for demolition by neglect by the APDC. Because these buildings are not being maintained, the roofs are failing, they are starting to disintegrate, and so the master plan of some other people who would like to see them out of here, not part of what Lunenburg's assets, or possible reuse or redevelopment, is now being impacted.
Well, we didn't pass over, so there you go. Mr. Bernie, identify yourself.
Adam Bernie, land use director, so I want to respond to some of the questions about the master plan. The current master plan the town has is from 2002. There have been some updates that were produced, but never fully incorporated, the most recent being in 2014, the Monmouth Regional Planning Commission did an economic development element through DLTA funding. The planning board is circling back around to review that, but the data on that is, at this point, five years old, and would have some significant updates. The state does not mandate that we spend money on a master plan. My job description does include overseeing the development of plans. We could do this in-house, it would be a 10-year project, in that if we hire a consultant, the majority of their time is focused on developing the plan. If we do it in-house, it's woven in with the zoning updates that we've been doing, and you all love to wait around to the end of town meeting for, over the past few years, in addition to the day-to-day business of the planning board, any duties I'm assigned by the town manager, or other departments and boards that I work with. So while yes, doing it in-house is an option, it's an option that has a decade worth of work attached to it. Hiring a consultant allows for the development of the master plan over an 18-month to 24-month period. There is a state grant we'll be applying for at the end of the month that would match the funds produced in the capital plan. You know, it's a grant, so we don't know what would come with that. There are nine elements in the master plan, economic development is one of those nine. There are some elements that we would need to contract for, regardless of whether we did it in-house, there's a transportation element, I'm not a transportation engineer, nor do we have one on staff. There's also a government chapter. My experience has always been that hiring a consultant to do that produces a more objective view of the functioning of town facilities and government, so there is some money that would need to be allocated regardless of whether we fund it fully through consultants or in-house. Additionally, I would point out that historically, the town has done outside articles annually with my predecessor, to fund the hiring of consultants to write zoning bylaws, which we've been doing wholly in-house, to do master plan elements and other studies, which, the majority of which we've done in-house outside of master planning, because it's on hold.
Thank you.
Carl Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. Yeah, I'd like to address the master plan element of this, which again, is $100,000. You know, it's a little misleading that we're only voting on 50,000 of it. I tried to look into this to get some of the details of what this $100,000 project, because it is a project, it's just in two pieces, and there are no details. The $100,000 request, which seems like a lot of money to me, to the commission, planning board, capital planning board, is a verbal request. There's nothing in writing that even explains what this task is, there's nothing that says what part of it is going to be done for the 50,000, what the timeline is, you know, how this money's going to be spent. So it's impossible to evaluate whether or not the 100,000 is the right number. I think it's very premature to be doing this, it's like a number of things we're going to come into later, that just hasn't had any visibility or discussion. It's just throw a, you know, a big number on the table, and hope it gets through, and then proceed. It's a lot of money, we should be able to do more in-house, it's important to have one. I don't know what the requirement is, how much of that requirement is driving this huge cost or effort. It is a 10-year update, you know, maybe there's a better plan, that you update an element a year or something, you know, instead of having these big chunks that you can't manage, or digest. I just heard that we've got inputs from years ago, that we're getting around to review, but, you know, but they're five years old, so they're almost not worth reviewing anymore. I just think it's very premature, I think there needs to be more discussion on this, and I think it's too big a number, and it could be, it could be broken down into smaller chunks. So I would like to make a move to amend this article.
I thought you were getting there.
And I would like to move that the capital, that capital planning item, master plan item, and the associated $50,000 be removed from the capital plan.
There's a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So let's focus on that a little bit, okay? We're not talking in general about the capital plan, I get that, but let's focus, so we can keep the conversation moving, because we've gotten, not yet through six articles, we've only got 37 more to go. Talking about the master plan, $50,000, to remove it is the motion. Amendment, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I had a question earlier that maybe I didn't phrase well as a question.
I probably wasn't listening. Go ahead.
I have, I have a question for the town manager, whomever is most appropriate to answer it. We had an update that 165,000 might be assigned in July if the budget gets approved. And that money would go, if we got that money, it would go back into the capital plan, right?
No. No. It would go specifically for that, the fuel tank project. It's an earmark, so it has specific language in the state budget for that project.
Okay, so that money would go into earmarking to that, and then we have, if that money, once that project is complete, if there's remaining, it returns. Does it return to the capital plan, or does it return to the general fund to be allocated anywhere, including operationally?
It returns to the town funds, which can be re-appropriated. So it doesn't return back to the entire capital plan to be used on other projects.
Okay. That's what I needed to understand, thank you.
And now you do. Mr. Arnold, go ahead.
I don't have any comment on the amendment.
Well, you haven't told us who you are. Who are you?
Eric Arnold, 105 Hemlock Drive. But it seems like you wanted to focus on the last amendment, and then.
Okay, all right, so we can focus on the amendment, and thank you for deferring that. Do I speak on the amendment, Mr. Clark?
Yes, I just, with these debates over $100,000 for fuel tanks, $50,000 for a master plan, I'd just like to put it in perspective that we're letting buildings that have significant value, we're not maintaining them, and so while we're debating over $150,000, we have property, historical property, that is basically, you know, we're willing to let $150,000 go down the tubes, so.
Thank you. Do you want to speak on the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Excellent.
I'm the Lockwood, 91 Main Street.
Hi, Ms. Lockwood.
So, you know, we hear a lot of talks about, you know, asking our current employees to do an extra job. So over the past few decades, we have, you know, government has changed a lot, so if we talk with Jack, he'll tell you that when he started, he used to have like 20-plus employees, and now he's down to five. And that has been an overall trend on government, to have fewer employees and hire out more. So if we keep asking our employees to do more, do more, do more, we're going to end up with another very large payroll. So we need to really understand, before we ask employees to do more, are they, do they have a full-time job? What are they doing? Because just throwing more, you know, more work on people that are already working full-time, is only going to end up with the job not getting done, or us having to add more people to the payroll. So that's my feeling about, you know, we need a master plan, we need to get it done, and we have someone who already works full-time. So I am against this amendment, because I don't want to put anybody else on the payroll, and I want to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold, can we see the gentleman behind you if he wants to talk about the amendment, the amendments to reduce that 50,000 for master plan?
Dennis Menne, 635 Goodrich Street. We're wondering if our town official could answer this. The master plans, most master plans that are done in the town, depends on different departments, but aren't those done primarily for additional funding, whether it be by grants or state funding? Don't you need those in our pipeline in order to go after some of the funding?
Somebody must know the answer, because I don't.
As the land use director, to answer this question.
The question is about, do we need that master plan to be able to get some funding available? That's the question, sir? I think so.
That was my understanding of the question. The master plan is a general roadmap for how the town wants to grow and operate. So this master plan doesn't open opportunities for funding, but what it does is it gives the public the opportunity to give input for a vision of what Lunenburg would look like in 10, 15, 20 years, and works through existing data to identify where we are now, and outline goals and objectives to move us to the place that residents and people have identified as the vision. So it's a, it's a look at how the town wants to grow, and oftentimes, as the town moves forward with zoning changes, growing commercial sectors, economic development, those sorts of things, often refer back to, well, what does the master plan say? What was said? We're dealing, again, with a plan that's nearly 18 years old. The town has grown exponentially in nearly two decades, and I think the makeup of the residents, and the makeup of where we're going, and where we may want to go, is drastically different. And putting this all together in short order provides the town with more solid basis, it's not a planning, the planning board, through Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81, has jurisdiction over creating the master plan. It's a multi-jurisdictional plan that involves all of the town departments, including schools, DPW, public safety, to create something that gives direction for how government operates, and moves us forward in the direction that the majority of residents would want to.
Thank you. Ms. Burcom, I'll get back to Mr. Lockwood on your motion.
Paul Farch from 312 Townsend Harbor Road, also a member of the planning board. One of the reasons I really felt strongly about the planning board was the lack of updates to our master plan. We've talked about studies, we've talked about plans that we have, the master plan hasn't been updated since 2003, and it really is the direction of where we go as a community, where we want to see development, what we want to do with our public facilities, what facilities we want to improve, where we want to see economic development. Do we want to see economic development? And a lot of that work can be done in-house, but there's also a lot of that work that has to happen by consultants, whether it be transportation studies, whether it be collecting data from a variety of different state sources for, you know, statistics. There's a lot of work that simply can't be done in-house, but I can tell you that when we go through the RFR for the master plan, the planning board will be looking very hard at what we do for RFP, what we. at what we do for RFP, what we do for, what, what that scope of work is, and it will be clearly defined. But we really need this document to guide us as a community. So, it's a critical component, in my opinion, for the town to update and keep updated, as was said by the Planning Director. This hasn't been updated since 2003. So, I would urge you to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. You weren't on the amendment, Mr. Arnold, and I know why Arshambo's behind you, so he could ready to vote. So, the motion is to remove that line, 50,000 dollars for master plan and planning. Amendment would be, um, a majority vote. All those in favor of removing that line, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
How much time we spend. So, that is still in. Mr. Arnold, you may be up, but capital plan is still before us.
So, again, Eric Arnold, 105 Hemlock Drive, and I certainly do not want to extend, uh, this debate on the capital plan anymore, but-
But!
I will. Um, to get back to something that Mr. Alonso asked about, if, and this is a question, if an item, uh, a large-ticket item like, say, um, Engine 4 or Rescue 2 was removed by amendment from the capital plan, what would be, uh, the process for something like that to get purchased by, through financing, uh, instead? Obviously, if something's needed, but the town wants to purchase it in a different way, what would happen? How long does that take?
I would say it would be a series of meetings with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, about further borrowing, and looking at our debt schedule, what we could, um, absorb, and working with our financial advisor on what that payment for principal and interest would be over a certain term of years. And then we would have to go back through the process at town meeting.
It would come up as like, uh, like a debt exclusion vote or something at town meeting, or would that just be part of the overall budget?
If it was, um, non-exempt borrowing, it wouldn't be like an override vote. It would be, um, which is abnormal, out of the, out of the norm for the town. Usually goes through the full capital planning process, like all other projects, and that's on an annual basis. But, it's possible that it could be taken up at a special town meeting.
And it, it would be my understanding that, I, I can't imagine that, as a town meeting, we can, by amendment, decide how something should be purchased. Is that correct?
We can't, it's out of order to make an amendment to borrow, to buy, you're correct. I thought somebody might bring that up, so I checked on it.
Um, well, given that, I'd like to make an amendment that, um, that Rescue 2 is removed from the capital plan, in favor of purchasing in a different way?
There is a second? There is always a one second, at least. Okay. Ms. Herrick, the current motion is to remove whatever line item that is about the Engine 4 replacement-
Well, he said Rescue. He said Rescue 2, which is the ambulance.
Oh, you did Rescue 2?
Did you mean the ambulance or the fire truck?
The line that says 310?
310.
Okay. Rescue 2, 310, to be removed, and it was seconded. On the motion, the amendment, chief?
Patrick Sullivan, uh, 197 Reservoir Road, Fire Chief. Again, I would recommend against this. Uh, we have been attempting to replace this vehicle for more than a ye-, uh, two years now. Uh, it does have issues. It needs to be retired. Uh, I, I would, I would let people that are much more versed in the finance end of it speak than I am, but I know the attempt by the, both the FinCom and the Capital Planning Committee has been to reduce the town's overall debt, which is a large part of our budget, and this process is going towards this. They have been looking at these issues out several years, with the goal of trying to reduce our overall debt. And that, and I would urge to vote no on this amendment.
Somebody from Finance want to address this, or somebody on the Board of Selectmen? Gentlemen's asking, think, comment?
I'd just comment that, um, these capital items, as I mentioned before, were, they don't go away. They just, we don't fund them now, they pile up, and then it, and even if we finance them, limits our ability to fund future projects. Um, so, it's, we had the opportunity where we could fully fund the purchase of it now without borrowing. Again, less borrowing is always good in my mind, so that's why we recommended the way we did.
Ms. Adams? I said I'd call on you, and now I have.
I'll wait until this, um, motion. It was something not involving this topic.
Okay, we'll speak, you can speak if you want.
It's just unrelated to this, so I think I should wait.
Okay, all right, okay. She thinks she should wait. Somebody else-
Again, just to, um, go back to the, the question of why not borrow, um, basically, and Mrs. Lozio, uh, basically, uh, raised the issue when we heard from the, uh, financial consultant to the town. Um, it was true that we have a good bond rating, we wanna keep a good bond rating, so that when we do borrow money, we get a better rate. Um, the debt position that the town currently has is showing up as weak in terms of how a bond rating agency might look at it, which may or may not be an issue right now. Um, and I think the, where the issue might come up would be in the next several years, as other towns, it, it really depends on what the bond agencies are looking at when we go to borrow. And, so, our concern is that the more we borrow now, not knowing what we might have to spend in a month, two months, six months, you know, who knows? I mean, if there is a decision made on where we're going to proceed with the buildings, we do anticipate that we're go-, people are gonna be coming looking for spending, and that, we'll have no choice but to go debt. So, I think we're trying to maintain a good position to get the best rates we can, if indeed we do have to proceed with debt. But I think if you look at how the percentages of, um, town finances are, and you can, you can find this online, if you go to, um, there's a, there are charts available in terms of how the town budget is distributed. Our debt takes up such, it, it's, it, it does blot out all of our department spending. Um, and I wanna say, I wanna say that it's close to 20% or more debt service, and what we're trying to do is bring that down, so our operating budget will be in a better position to address the current needs of the town.
Do you know what you're moving? I do. Because it's the motion that's on the floor.
Steve Arshambo, 662 Page Street. I'm moving the question on the motion.
Moving the motion. Got it. Okay. So, the motion is to delete the Rescue 2 replacement, 310,000. Be a, um, majority vote. All those in favor, please place to delete it. Please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Now, before you go, Mr. Arshambo, which I can anticipate, Ms. Adams, before you go, which I don't know what you're gonna say, let me tell, in town council, looking over the motion as read, is different from what is in your warrant. Your warrant allows for borrowing on Article 6. Your motion, capital plan, selectmen, does not state borrow. So, if you're gonna borrow to fund capital plan, Article 6, we're gonna need an amendment on that.
We're not borrowing. We're not proposing to borrow.
You're not proposing to borrow. The motion, not proposing to borrow. Okay. Wanna make sure we're clear on what we're voting on. Okay. Ms. Adams, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not making any amendments to the capital plan, but I just wanted-
Thank God.
Okay. But we don't need to insult. If I had wanted to, then I'm entitled, but-
I'm just generally talking about moving along.
I just wanted to make a general comment for all the speakers that talked about building neglect, and the fact that the capital plan is the place where we fund, um, building maintenance needs. I do think where this is a year's budget, it's shocking that there's not one thing that made it on here. I know the Vertex trials very well. One of the buildings that got a good condition assessment was the Town Hall, and its immediate need was a roof, and it was either somewhere between 40 to 60,000 dollars.